I will get that coming.
Oh, well.
Welcome to the joint meeting of the Select Board, Board of Assessors and the Finance Committee. We'll call to order at 6:32 PM. I will move that the Select Board, Board of Assessors and the Finance Committee go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 30a, Section 21a 3 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, which I do so declare, First Slate Power Resources Inc. and Northfield Mountain LLC. We will return to regular session following.
And the respective chairs should also declare.
And then if I just ask the chair of each of the others to declare, that it would have a detrimental effect, or?
I declare it will have a detrimental effect.
And I declare it will have a detrimental effect.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, the roll call. Brian, call the roll.
Selectman Loin.
Aye.
Chairman Smith.
Aye.
Selectman Batberry.
Aye.
Chairwoman Smith.
Aye.
I guess Finance Committee member Duffy.
Aye.
Member Fellows.
Aye.
Member Loin.
Aye.
Board of Assessors Chair Hammack.
Aye.
Assessors member Burnett.
Aye.
Member Boydin.
Aye.
Thank you everyone. We'll be back following the executive session.
Welcome back to the joint meeting of the Select Board, Forum Assessors and the Finance Committee at 7:56 PM.
Okay, so we are sharing information with you that the Board reviewed and voted on to make a recommendation for you to decide on. So, the town could have a tax rate that is the same for everyone. If you take a peek, actually right below the heading FY 2026, below that, tax rates. If we had a single tax rate as of now, it would be fourteen dollars and seventy-three cents per thousand dollars of valuation that an individual or business has in value. In the state of Massachusetts, each town and city, each municipality is allowed to shift the tax burden more so onto the commercial, industrial and personal property side. And so, we've given you some different scenarios. If you go, I guess, kind of below where it says estimation in the heading, we show a shift of sixty-five percent. Next column, sixty-six, sixty-seven, all the way up to seventy. The Board of Assessors, as long as I can remember, has always recommended a sixty-five percent shift. So that means thirty-five percent, no, it doesn't work out exactly that way, but a shift more so onto the commercial, industrial, personal property folks. So you can see at the bottom of that, if we go back to that sixty-five percent shift column, down at the bottom, the CIP, Commercial, Industrial, Personal Property, they would be covering eighty-six. Am I saying that correctly, Jackie? Eighty-six percent?
Yes.
Of that, okay, thank you. And the residential and open space, that's what the O stands for, because there are, you know, just land lots, would cover thirteen percent of that. Whereas if you kind of go to the left, if we were all at one, commercial, industrial, personal property commercial, industrial, personal property would have covered seventy-eight percent and residential and open space would have been twenty-one percent. So we voted unanimously to recommend a shift to sixty-five percent. And down at the bottom, you can see previous years, we just went back ten years, you can see that that shift, bottom left, previous year tax rates. And MRF stands for Minimum Residential Factor and it has always been sixty-five percent. Many, many years ago, we could go lower, back in, again, back in the nineties, we could go down into the fifties, but that changed and now we are only allowed to go to six, as low as sixty-five percent.
So there's a couple of things, the percent change in values from fiscal year '25 to '26. It was, values increased about almost seven and a half percent in residential, based on the sales from the previous year, which would be January of '24 to December of '24. There was also an increase in the commercial base of about five percent. One percent in the industrial and the personal property dropped about a percent and a half. That was related to a drop in the value of the mountain project overall. That was related to the capacity payments. They were at eight point five percent and they dropped to eight. So that was the big drop in the personal property. And so it was an overall gain of one point five percent overall. The values did go up in the residential side, about seven and a half, eight percent based off sales. The average value for the single-family home for fiscal '25 is two hundred and seventy-one thousand three thirty and the tax bill is two thousand five hundred and twenty-six. The, that's an increase of about twenty-one thousand dollars from the fiscal '24 average, which was two hundred and forty-nine thousand six thirty-five. And the average tax bill is an increase that was based off of the tax rate of about two hundred and twenty-four dollars from the previous year. If you want to talk about the small commercial exemption as well, or if you have any other prior questions, I can go right into that.
Could you?
Go right into it?
Yes.
Yes. So, the small commercial exemption, I had given you, we had given you a sheet that told you there were ten eligible parcels and it would result in one hundred and ninety-seven seven sixteen valuation being shifted to the remaining commercial and industrial base. This would result in a total exemption of three thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and fourteen cents. These are approximates because, you know, we're not actually doing it yet. And, but what it does do is, it does impact the tax rate by a penny. So what it means is personal property would be approximately six hundred and thirteen dollars per thousand if you went with the sixty-five MRF. And the commercial and industrial would be sixteen dollars and fourteen cents per thousand. Because the burden for the small commercial exemption is being shifted on to, was actually a relatively small base for commercial and industrial.
Questions, comments on any of that?
I have no concern.
It's our recommendation that you go with sixty-five percent. But as I'm looking at the numbers, this would result in, if I got the numbers right correctly, if they're wrong, the residential rate would go from about nine thirty-one to about nine fifty-eight, which is about twenty-seven cents per thousand. And the industrial, commercial, personal property go from fifteen sixty to sixteen thirteen, which is about fifty-three cents. In part, Jackie mentioned property values have gone up. People will be asking, you know, why do my tax bill go up? Why does the value of my house go up? The assessors are required by law. We're notified of every sale that there is. And if a house is valued at two hundred thousand, it sells for three hundred thousand. We get a bunch of those where things are selling for more than they're valued at currently. We have to relook at everything, revalue everything, so everybody's paying their fair share. You don't have somebody with an identical house to yours next door is paying half the tax you're paying. So everybody's fair. Maybe everybody's equally upset, but trying to be fair with everybody. And law requires us to do that. When the prices of things go up, we have to revalue stuff. Is that pretty accurate Jackie?
Yeah, we have to be in assessment sales ratio between ninety and one hundred and ten percent. When we did the analysis this year, we were right around ninety-six percent. And your other classes have to be within five percent of that. So, you know, it's a, the market's still very strong. The housing market is very strong in Irving still. I want to say that assessments won't go up next year, but I believe they will. Based off of the first six months of this year that I looked at and didn't use, they're still, still way up there, way over the assessed values, so. But it's a, it is a requirement that the assessors look at the sales every year now. Just one of those things that we do, keep the market in line.
I bring it up as a point of information. We all may be familiar with this because we've heard it before, but the thousand people watching us may not.
Ten thousand people.
Yeah, it could be statewide. But at least if people realize that, you know, taxes go up, the value of your property goes up. It's not, we don't control the value of your property, it is what it is. And your taxes go up not because we all think money grows on trees, it's not, not at all.
If I'm following this, and I know I'm oversimplifying it, but increasing, values of homes increasing, therefore the assessments go up, and two and a half percent, the net impact's obviously going to be higher than that. Also expanding what our levy is at a rate faster than two and a half because of that increased values too.
Right.
Without new growth.
With it.
I mean, not that there isn't any, but that's just change in value up from what we have, right, as a basis?
Right, so you had the two and a half and then we had about three hundred and nineteen thousand in allowable new growth that we could raise and appropriate to the levy. And it should be on an average about seventy-three dollars more for the average house value now. It varies, you know, up and down. I will tell you that we do have some homes that are approaching the million dollar mark, surprisingly. And they may go over a million in a couple of years if the market continues, but yeah, so.
The average seventy-three is just the tax rate increase? Because then you're going to factor in the value increase potentially, right?
Right, yes, well, that was.
Because your average tax bill went up about two twenty-five, but the tax rate impact is about seventy.
It will be, yes. The rate, yes, your tax bill will be higher than it was previous year.
And by more than the average seventy-three, because of the assessed value, right?
Right, and I have to say that the number of the fiscal year '25, that is a number from the DOR website. It's not a number that we did internally. It would be way too time consuming to try to figure out what the average is based off the new values for '26. So that's a '25 average, a single home value based on the Department of Revenue website for the town of Irving.
Got it.
No other discussion, is there a motion for the tax rate?
I make a motion to shift the minimum residential factor known as the MRF to sixty-five percent for a recognition of the assessors. This will result in a tentative tax rate of nine dollars and fifty-eight cents per thousand for residential and open space and sixteen dollars and fourteen cents per thousand for commercial and industrial and sixteen dollars and thirteen cents per thousand for personal property.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the FY '26 small commercial tax exemption, which we kind of already discussed. So if there's, once there's other questions, is there a motion?
Make a motion to authorize a small commercial exemption statute for fiscal year 2026. This will, this will, this will shift the tax burden of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and sixteen to the remaining commercial, industrial and personal property classes.
Second. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment that recommending that you do this, it's not much, but it's all we can do to help and encourage small businesses that are struggling. And it is at the expense of bigger business, but it's a few thousand dollars or a few hundred dollars means a lot to someone that's trying to start a business and we're doing all that the law will allow you to do. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I believe that covered our joint items, unless I missed something?
Can I make one more comment before we adjourn our joint meeting?
Thirty seconds, yes.
It'll be less than thirty seconds. It's not going to be.
Clock started. We got a shot clock coming for budget season to watch out.
No, Jackie's done a wonderful job for many years keeping all these numbers straight and I'd like to publicly thank her for that. And I work closely now with Diane Somerall, our new principal assessor, who's picked it up quickly and very competently explained this stuff to me. And part of the reason I get to know this is I can't talk to Jackie, she's an assessor. We can't have an open meeting violation. So I talk with Diane and she understands this very well. And we commend them both for putting this stuff together for us.
This is my last classification hearing, my twenty-seventh one. Yeah, well, I know.
You didn't want to say it, I didn't even thirty?
No.
Well, as a principal assessor.
Yes, as a principal assessor.
You might be sitting there through thirty as a professor.
I might even be in it as a different half. This is the last one, I have to do all the work.
Well, thank you both. With that, I'll make a motion, we adjourn the joint meeting with the Board of Assessors and the Finance Committee and resume or continue the Select Board meeting at eight-ten.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for joining us.
And my apologies, I was talking about a ten-year one, I forgot we gave you a five-year one.
In case you were like, what is he talking about?
I scrolled and I went, ah, well, different copy.
Back to the top, we have surplus equipment requests, Museum Committee, third read. Check for library, no interest at this time?
None.
Recommendation to donate it? Any discussion or motion?
I will make a motion to deem the books listed in the Museum Committee's surplus property disposition request dated October eleven, two thousand and twenty-five as surplus property available for donation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you gentlemen.
Discussion regarding draft agreement for Ursico, proposed upgrades to Irving Center Waste Water Treatment Plant, POTW number two. You might as well, I mean, I don't know. Yep, come on up, Pete, thank you. So we saw this first read last time, talked about it a little bit. A few red lines in there, blue lines in there. Striking the max limit. Under two B. Some notes, I believe, that we talked about these last time in three A.
Any other items as we've continued to review these, other questions, other things that have come up for the Board or Pete?
Were we going to ask our consultant if that forty-five days was a suitable time?
I just need to get that confirmation, but I don't think we're concerned with forty-five days, but we will confirm that with time bond. I know you had questions, we've obviously discussed time bond. There's a question that you all raised about whether or not time bond needs to specifically be cited in here. It should be the reviewer of your choosing. I don't know why we would not go with time bond, but it doesn't feel like it needs to be in your agreement as to who the exact reviewers. But we will confirm that. We did have a brief meeting with the President of the Company last Thursday?
Friday?
Thursday.
Last week. End of last week.
And I let him know that you were having a second read on this draft. He's eager to meet with the three of you and see if we can come to a final resolution. He's aware of the edits because both councils worked on this red line version that you're reviewing. So he's hopeful that you are ready to schedule that meeting with him.
Just to hear our thoughts on it as it is, because I know one of the items that we spoke of last time is the lack of drawings and project documents.
We did ask that question.
It does kind of preclude us, I think, from being ready to sign it without having seen it and reviewed it.
We did ask that question at the end of last week and we were told that they're ready. They've been talking to DEP about DEP's approval process for equipment like this. And they're not at approval for this concept, they're at pre-approval. So they've been doing the back and forth and the revisions of that, of those documents. So they are available now for us to have as well.
Other items, questions, concerns?
None, none at this time.
So, next steps, do you want to see plans? We can get those or the exhibits that would be incorporated before we meet with? Or do you want to see them and meet with Ursico at the same time as receiving those? Because we haven't seen him yet? Or do you want to see him and have another meeting with us before we meet with him?
Personally, I would like the opportunity to look at them first, get granular with them. And there's any, I don't know that if, we just saw them for the first time the night of the meeting. I don't know if the real pertinent questions would come to the surface or not. Sometimes it's a challenge to communicate and examine things on the fly and be respectful of everybody's time. I don't know that there'll be a lot of questions. And I took the tour of the facility and understand in principle what they're trying to do, but I don't think it would hurt to see them in advance of the meeting.
So, I guess I would rather meet with them in the plants so that if we have any questions, we can ask them directly. And if there's something gone wrong, they can explain it to us. And I just think that would expedite the process rather than delaying it for another meeting.
What if we were able to obtain them this week and got them to the three of you? I know you all are very busy, but if we had them this week, that potentially provide opportunity over the coming seven to ten days to review them in advance of, say, the twenty-second, if you were even able to meet with them on the twenty-second.
Well, that's what I, I don't want to delay the process. In fact, the reason why I'd like to see the documents ahead of time is to make that more efficient use of time.
I just don't know if I'm going to know when I'm looking at, when I look at the document to begin with.
Without them walking us through it potentially anyway? Well, I think that, I mean, that compromise works for me. If we can get them by this, this week, the end of this week, get them to the Board to have them. If any of us have specific questions, we can connect with Pete next week. If he may know, you know, if we wish, send them to him. We can also send them to Brian and he can make them aware and prepared to at least speak to those at the joint meeting and at the And at the joint meeting, we talk through and discuss them, but also doesn't mean we can't talk to them again in the following meeting if we wish to. I don't know that we'll be ready to wrap this up in one meeting jointly anyway, so.
And I'll say, if that's not possible, it's, of all the things I'm going to lose sleep over, that's not possible.
I'd say, I think, I didn't hear any disagreement. I think we all agreed that we don't feel like there's a need to identify the chosen engineer. It's the town's engineer, you know, as such. At the same time, I think making sure time and bond feels the timelines make sense because they are likely who we will use is important to do, and we should, ahead of next meeting. Any, at this point, do we want to accept everything that we have discussed so far as what we will be bringing to the next meeting?
Give you a clean copy?
Yes.
Yep. Agreed. And we'll, without looking at the twenty-second right now, I don't know if I want to commit to that, but we'll try to target having it on the twenty-second.
I can at least ask them if they're available.
Yeah, let's check with them, and we're working on that agenda. So we'll see if we can't get it on for the twenty-second. If not, we'll look to move it to the next available meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Follow up with Eric and Tawanda tomorrow and ask for a copy of the plans they've submitted and the documents that they've submitted to DEP?
Sure.
Okay.
Excellent. Then he may give us a calendar, too.
Right, we've asked them, so just a slight tangent but related, we've been talking to them about the removal of the belt press that you surplussed. They've decided that they would like to remove it so it doesn't have to go through the roof. They're going to remove it out of the plant and get it outside so it's available to be surplused. And they would like to take that on. So it doesn't, we don't have to move conduits, we don't have to move all the other things that we thought we'd have to move. So they're going to be working on that process. But as we're having this conversation, it was very clear that there's a lot of moving pieces, and as two organizations, we're used to working independently, so we need to coordinate some of the timing of some of this. And so we were going to put together, ask them to give us just a general calendar of what they're looking to accomplish and what timeline, and then we can fit in what our timeline looks like for surplusing or other processes. So we're going to work collaboratively on sort of high-level calendar of how we're going to do this work together.
Makes sense.
So they're going to find an alternative way themselves to move it out of the building without needing to do the crane?
Correct.
And make sure that it's not damaged or elements and all that while it waits?
Correct.
They want to take it apart in pieces, wheel them out on, I'll call it a gantry, block and tafflet up, wheel it out in sections.
As long as it doesn't, anything that would materially impact the value, if anything, hopefully it makes it easier for someone if it's already out.
That's what we were thinking. And then they can work at their pace.
Don't think there'll be any concerns from the board?
They have room outside to store it. I think we've already established that, but.
Yes, I'll make sure it's covered also. I mean, it should be fine, but we want to cover it.
It's been inside, we don't want it exposed to elements before someone owns it other than us. And you'll talk to them about plans, make sure they're clear. If we don't see them this week, it will, won't be able to meet on the twenty-second for sure, even if they're available, and we'll work on timing as well.
Yep, sure. Excellent, thank you all.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Review of the draft, open space and recreation plan update, second read.
So we provided your feedback on that matrix, and they're making those upgrades. So it's not reflected in this. They're collecting all the feedback from the different boards and commissions and the public, but they have made those changes and they will be reflected in your final, final version. Your final, final.
So the deadline's the end of the month for comments. When's the submission deadline or target?
We're hoping to submit in the first two weeks of January. Tentatively, the Open Space Committee, I believe, is scheduled to meet on January sixth. CONCOM had to reschedule last week, so they're going to meet next week to discuss. You all have done your two readings. I can't recall if the planning board has already looked at it in November or if they're looking in December, but planning board's working on a review, and it's been sent to REC. And then we put it in the December edition of the Around Town, asking for feedback from residents, and it's posted to the town website. And I know we'd already received some feedback as of yesterday from residents, so all of that's being collated and incorporated into your final document.
Any other callouts or items that we observed? Or just what we commented on last week or last meeting?
No new concerns.
Do you all feel at the end of our public feedback process on December thirty-first, do you all as a board want to review it one final time? Or are you okay with the Open Space Committee taking all the feedback and making their final revisions and then authorizing the submission?
Well, I own, I'm good with delegating the authority, but my question is, if it turns out something's wrong, who gets the blame?
I agree in both councils. I think I would be interested to see a summary of the changes, even if it's just a short memo that says, you know, we got, we don't even have to list all the feedback, but we made these general modifications based on feedback. So we have a sense of what was different, and, I mean, we made recommendations, we know what those are, but don't know what all the others might be. To understand what they are and at least have an opportunity to look that over and then say, hey, hold on, we want to have a conversation about something? Or that's fine, go for it. I don't think we need to go through the whole document again in final form, as opposed to just know what, at least for me, know what else was modified, and if nothing raises any kind of concern or question, we know what we're backing and signing up for.
Right.
I agree with that.
Okay.
I guess the only question I have is, is there, is this document appropriate for adding language for possible grants, state grants and feasibility studies for waterways, books, et cetera?
It's a great question. I mean, obviously, the open space and recreation plan is specifically designed as a chapter of your comprehensive planning master plan, to be something that states the town's priorities and therefore is leverage for grant opportunities. So action items specifically, I believe in table seven, are really the things that make up targeted grant applications over the next seven years. So we can go back over the action items in that table and see if there's any that align specifically with locations like Key up Brook and things of that nature. I know we've been trying to work to incorporate those questions and concerns into several of our planning documents, and I know that was discussed at length in this document. I know we've also discussed it in the Hazard Mitigation Plan that we're also working simultaneously on. So we can definitely review it from that lens.
The only reason I bring it up is because if we learned anything from doing the grant for senior housing is that anywhere and any place that we can document those concerns and issues, they're going to be looking for that.
Absolutely.
And if we can show it and demonstrate that we've talked about it, and it is a concern, a real concern, we have a better chance at achieving those state grants.
It's great feedback. Let's have the team look at it from that lens.
Okay, so we'll carry it for a third read next meeting, or on the twenty-second, and then we'll look to put it on the agenda following Open Spaces' review of the final in January to just review a summary of changes and give the go-ahead to submit based on that.
Got it. Thank you all.
Review of meeting minutes, November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, December first, twenty-twenty-five, and December third, twenty-twenty-five.
Make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes of November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, as written.
Second. Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes of December first, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes of December third, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion regarding grant application requests for the Department of Senior Services? So is our senior services directors getting up to speed on grants and such? There's one here that she looked at and is looking for us to give her the okay to go ahead and go ahead with that grant.
I will make a motion that we authorize the acceptance of the New Salem Academy grant in the amount of four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the purposes of providing financial assistance for the performance of dramatics to be held at Irving Elementary School and a pound art continues class to be held at the Irving Senior Community Center.
Second.
Do you want to authorize a signatory on that? Do we need to? Or did that effectively do it?
Don't exactly do that. Are you okay with Director McAndrews serving as the signatory?
I will amend my motion to authorize Director McAndrews to execute the agreement, the acceptance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Discussion regarding grant application requests for the Police Department?
Is that bulletproof?
Yep, Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program. Looking for authorization to apply for it.
Reimburses the town if awarded up to fifty percent for each of the vests.
Okay, and he's targeting three?
Correct.
A request for three. Any questions or concerns on that?
None.
I will make a motion to authorize Chief Robert Holst to apply for grant funding through the Patrick Labeau Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program and authorize Seame to execute any agreements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Review of the proposed amendments to the Police Department Policy four dot thirty-six, Community Services Cadet, first read.
Did those not redline like I was hoping?
They did not.
I can pull that up. Okay. So you all approved this document back in October of twenty-two as you were preparing to launch the cadet program. Obviously, as you're aware, in the process of launching that program over the last two weeks, and as we were working through it with the bargaining unit, there were just some questions that came up as we reviewed the policy together, looking for a little more clarification. So I meant for that to appear in redline, but I will just call it out to you. So on page one, in the second paragraph, there is a ending sentence, and there's one additional word added to the preceding sentence. So on that third line up from the bottom of that second paragraph, it says responding to emergency calls alone. Alone did not appear in the policy before. So we're adding that language in there, and then that following sentence to clarify how that would be handled.
So the word alone in the last sentence are the ads?
Is, correct, correct. I don't believe it was the board's intention or the chief's intention, and we've reviewed this, I should add, we've reviewed this with Chief Holst. I don't believe it was the intention to say that the cadet was not going to respond to any emergency calls. How else would they achieve their training? But I don't believe it was your intention either, that they would be in a dangerous situation that they're not prepared for. So to bring in that clarity and to provide the context where the discretion exists.
Any questions or concerns on that edit?
None.
And I'll resend this to you in the redline, so it's called out again.
Next one?
The second one is going to appear on page three. It is in that long list of bullets before you get to the security function, second up from the bottom. It just adds participates in routine traffic stops and enforcement. So there was a question about whether or not the cadet was allowed to participate in that activity. That is an activity that happens quite frequently, obviously, in Irving. And so, again, it was my understanding and chief's understanding that it would be appropriate to participate in routine traffic stops and enforcement activities, but we're not engaging in high-speed pursuits through town either. So calling out when it's appropriate, when it's not.
I guess my only problem with participates in routine traffic stops and enforcement is that they start off routine, and you don't know when it turns to something else.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
And in that particular situation, when it turns, there's not going to be any options for removing the cadet.
Correct.
I think that it's partly why in the prior edit, it was, you know, to remain in the cruiser or the station, whereas there may be a time where something shifts and you're already out on a call. Can't ask you to remain at the station when you're at that call now, so return to the cruiser, whatever that may be, appropriate at the time, best they can.
We've even discussed if it was necessary, identifying a safe location to allow the cadet to exit the vehicle if it was necessary, and then allow for another staff member to convene with the individual and get them back to the station. So if they really had to exit so that an officer could, you know, proceed with a pursuit or some other response. We have had some preliminary conversations, obviously, we have to fine-tune how that would work in practical terms, but.
Having contingencies.
Having contingencies.
Working out contingencies for all these things as best we can, because they're generalized.
Right. You try to think of every potential scenario, and undoubtedly, there's questions that still arise, and I think it was very helpful that the members brought this to our attention to seek the clarification.
I agree, it's kind of difficult because you want the cadet to learn.
Right.
But you don't want to endanger them.
Right, right. And everybody is on that same page, and I've reviewed this with the cadet as well, so she's aware of these policy amendments that you all were being asked to consider, so.
Further edits?
If you go now to the top of page five. those two bullets address the same two topics, they're just repeated and that this is all, I know these are a lot of bullets, so this is all under the heading of limitations.
All of these edits are kind of all to the same core.
Yeah, item and principle.
Yep.
Okay. And then the very last suggested edit appears on the top of page six. Yeah, top of page six and it has to do with uniform. I know you all in detail had a conversation with Chief Holst about the anticipated uniform for the cadet. It would be a brown or a khaki uniform that would be distinguished from the patrol uniform. I believe it would also, the plan was to have it patched with the phrase cadet on the back. Somehow what ended up in the policy was a matching uniform. So when this was brought to our attention, like that doesn't match what the board said. And when I reread it, I realized it somehow made its way into this policy that it was going to have a matching uniform with our officers and that was not the intention. So the proposal is to strike where it says the word blue currently in the policy and replace it with a phrase such as khaki colored. It currently in the policy reads the word match. So the proposal is to strike that and replace that with distinguished the CSC, distinguish the CSC from the Irving Police Officer Uniforms specifications. And then add to the words, and will wear black boots, just to clarify the sentence.
And the polo shirt is where the cadet?
Right. Exactly.
I would recommend we just add that polo shirt, you know, with the word cadet emblazoned on it. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Polo shirt is summer, which is the status in the winter.
I was thinking it. It's cold out there.
Yes. I'm gonna double check with the chief on that. I don't have the answer right now, but let me get that for you.
I mean, yeah. So shirt or jacket, outer layer, I mean, we probably don't need to be as specific as it's a polo shirt in those seasons would be one thought depending on.
Strike polo and just shirts, jackets.
Yeah.
Outermost layer.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, shirt, jacket, or outer layer, you know, whatever that looks like. But I think it kind of gets to what you're saying.
Yeah.
So I did notice, I don't know how these have lived so long in front of me and I didn't find them, but grammar police.
Uh-oh.
Very minor, if I may.
Where we're going?
Section one, general conditions, first lines, rates, community services, cadet position is designed to allows individuals, should just strike the S on the end of allows.
Yes.
And take that S and move it down to third from the bottom line of that paragraph where it reads cadet are civilians, should read cadets are civilians.
Got it.
And one more, over to go. On top of page four, one, two, three, four, five, sixth bullet that says render first aid when qualified to persons who are seriously ill or injured.
Got it.
And that is all I have.
Okay. Thank you. You make me want to change it to once qualified, but that's fine. Suck it. Okay. All right, we'll bring it back for a second read next regular meeting, twenty-second.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Discussion regarding the Information Technology Department's staffing. I'm going to recuse myself from this side of the table for this discussion.
Switch sides. Probably want to take over if I can, officially, I'm guessing.
So I guess my major concern is, is, I don't have any problem with the job description, but I, my concern is, overall, my concern is determining the correct amount of hours and then second would be the education and experience qualifications I have some concerns with. I don't know if an associate's degree is enough with, as it reads, it says associate's degree and equivalent from a two-year college or a technical school and three years of related experience. I can't imagine someone with associate's degree having that ability, but I just don't know enough about IT.
Right. Well, and not to be presumptive, but back in 2013, when your predecessors worked on this, that may have felt appropriate and here you are, twelve years later, looking at it through the current lens and so I'm sure the depth of the role has evolved and these requirements may no longer feel fully accurate. I don't know exactly, Bets and I have both researched the record and the details aren't deep as to what your predecessors discussed when they made these considerations.
So 2013, in technology terms, we might as well be talking about when the dinosaurs roamed the earth. A lot has changed. IT as a umbrella term has evolved and is evolving quicker as days go by. There's an increased need for information security, an increased need for cybersecurity. We've navigated away from physical paper documents to storage to even how we execute things. When I look at this job description, I think it will need a major overhaul in looking at, you know, one of the things that I look at in my day hours is helping people understand as part of the technology team is, you know, a computer person is, you know, not a computer person is not a computer person. Like in this role, I read, we need a unicorn that understands systems and can administer those, but also understands networks. And those are two different people and like the IT world, you don't just pick up the phone to call the IT department and Joe on the help desk is going to be able to assist you with the firewall problem or a server crashing. And the guy who's going to help you with the firewall or the server isn't the guy that's going to help you with your applications or the person, I should say. It's, there's a lot more specialty involved. We're not even talking about the people who do the analytics work. So, or, well, they all have a role, but then there's generally somebody who is responsible for that security aspect of it to make sure that everything we're doing doesn't get seeped out into the dangerous dark web or just anywhere in open source. So I think one thing to say is, to your point, yes, we need to establish the appropriate amount of hours and what that looks like. I know in your request, as sort of the de facto person who oversees this role and function, you mentioned talking with department heads, you know, and, you know, what their short-term requests are, you know, what are their pain points that as we evolve, what are we going to solve?
Right.
And long-term, how, you know, how does Chief Holst, how does Abby, how does Glenn foresee leveraging technology within their departments in the future? And we need to be able to build towards that.
Right. And we had a brief conversation about what that could even look like and to do that proper analysis takes time. If we don't start, we're never going to get it done. So I do think it's something that we should start sooner rather than later, but I don't think it's a quick answer to do the proper due diligence. And I think the other stakeholder that we haven't discussed yet is what our citizens expect from us. And as you were all both talking, I was reflecting that when I was first hired in 2016, Monday evenings, Town Hall was open until approximately nine o'clock at night so people could come in and do their business. People don't do that anymore and instead they expect it all to be done online. They want that immediate ability to pay when it's convenient and accessible for them. And so our expectation from our citizenry has evolved to not only have an in-person presence, but have these services available online. So making sure that that stakeholder group's needs are also being met and it goes hand in hand with the security. The more access that you provide, the more service you provide, equally you must address the security of all of that. And those are things that a regular department isn't thinking about or necessarily has the skills or the training to think about in a robust manner. That's something that they would have to partner with an IT office to really understand and how to balance the service that they want to provide in a way to do it that's appropriate. So I'm sure we've got what we're trying to get off the ground today. Add five years to this, I'm not sure what that service looks like, but I'm sure that the citizens will tell us what they want five years from now.
Like in 2013, when this started, it was far from what it is today. To your point, Jim, not only the technology, the environment we had, I mean, there wasn't an email system back then, there was a few Comcast addresses. And we've been through a few iterations of email systems now and migrations and cybersecurity, infrastructure, hardware, help desk, printers broken, you know, I mean, you name it and probably more has been covered by this role and we haven't addressed. The job description being probably far out of date in terms of the actual needs and function that it has served. And then also, where do we want to go? Rather than reactive, it's mostly started from just big fix and then as we either had demands and requirements in COVID, we did a lot early in COVID to change how we worked and just make it happen from an infrastructure and backend standpoint. We were fortunate, the place we were in at that time, but still, but not as much proactive and what are we trying to do around security and service and resiliency and procedure, policy, you know, business continuity, all of those sort of things that should also be incorporated. The scope can be quite large and I think defining what is, what could be, what's wanted and what could be are three different things and then how does that connect to whatever job description or jobs or department scope that the board feels is appropriate over some, you know, period of time plan is probably more involved than just this moment reviewing the job description, but it's a start, right? We start somewhere.
No, I think we need some time with it. You know, this, we didn't get to where we are overnight. We're not going to get to where we need to be. Forget about where we want to be. But I think this is a good place to start, you know, to sit down, you know, maybe in simple terms, have, you know, department heads fill out their wish list. You know, if they're, it's the season to make lists, right?
True.
What is it you want? And see what those look like. Obviously, I did one read through the job description. I'd like to take a look at where we are even in terms of technology policies. What do we have or what do we?
Another thing that's missing from the duties is to advise and recommend on what should be in place for IT policies. We have some. I think our most recent ones are probably well outdated based on your opening comment about what's changed in just the last few years and so.
And some of that was tied to kind of establishing the IT coordinator position?
Yeah.
I think that's what it was in statement a little while ago. Obviously, that supplemented some, but wasn't really probably positioned for the scope that we're talking about and the needs of where we are today and that, you know, changing this year too, so.
Does the state give any help on IT information?
They do. So the state, obviously, I think, again, to the security concern that Sleckman Loyn raised, they have done some reorganization at the state level. I think a larger portion of it is not only probably the work that the state had to do to secure their systems and to stay ahead of things, they also had to look at the economy and make sure that for even our private sector employers, that they could help keep them in a safe condition. But then they looked at municipalities who are also vulnerable targets, who didn't have the same robust systems in place. So in the last few years, not only have they launched grant programs to look at the technical assistance side, if it's policy development and maybe bringing in a consultant to assist with some of this, training and best practice work, but they've also launched divisions such as the Mass Cyber Center that is leveraging significant state resources to make cybersecurity and all of those protective elements, something that is at the forefront for municipalities. The challenge is interacting with it. You have to have staff time to be able to do that back and forth with the state and take advantage of those opportunities. And I'm sure that much like our local peers, we are not engaging to the level that would be ideal. I'm sure some of our larger counterparts have the capacity to participate in a more robust manner.
They also have more developed and larger staffs to work with.
I'm sure.
So in terms of this, you know, the cyber center or any of the funding, is that something that within the coordinator's job description, that could be something they would assist with or?
Haven't been able to find a copy of a job description for the coordinator's position. So. So these were, and we've talked about over the years, I'm not saying it doesn't exist, I have not been able to find.
Okay.
When we did our larger classification project back in 2019 and 2020, and we worked through a lot of those job descriptions and tried to make sure that they were as up-to-date as possible, because it had been almost a decade at that point, these positions and the EMD positions were the ones that had not been touched. They were identified at that time as the next ones to be addressed, and they haven't been addressed since. And so we've been keeping the other job descriptions up to date. As you've had vacancies, you've been revisiting them and make sure that they reflect your current needs before they go back out for advertisement. We remain at IT being the outstanding items. So what I would say is, this is an opportunity for us to sit, review this position, try to go back through the records one more time to see if your predecessors contemplated at least a scope of work, if not a proper job description for that work. It is just stipended, so I don't know if they put as much focus on that as maybe they should have. And then I think you all need to consider how you want that to be structured going forward. I know some of our peers have, some of our smaller peers have outsourced to, I'm sure, mixed reviews and results, and I'm sure to our bigger peers, many of them have benefited from, you know, internalizing service. I'm sure that there's the occasion that they have an outside vendor, just like we do, that they need to bring in to consult on the project or work on something. So I think we need to figure out what that right blend is. To Slickman Loyn's point, we can't probably justify and maintain a diverse staff for this one department to do everything that would be probably a niche function in a larger community. You are looking for a position that can do multiple things that typically may be multiple people. But that's not unlike many of our other departments who are asked to do a broader width of things than maybe they would be asked in a different community. It's just maybe the volume is less, so.
All right. So I'm going to have an ask, and I hate asking because I know what your schedule looks like, but in your spare time, you know?
This is what I was hoping you would do.
What's that?
I was hoping for this.
I would like to try and locate that coordinator's job description. I'm not saying this person isn't doing work, but I somewhat wince when I feel like we're paying out a stipend and we don't even really know what for or what the expectations are. So, and if that can't be located, I don't even know if you'd just Google municipal IT coordinator job description, and maybe...
I mean, UMass has a huge IT component, and the reason I bring it up, because Linda works from work, I work from home remotely on a part-time basis, and she's always calling IT directly and saying, this has happened or this has happened. And sometimes that results in her having to bring in her laptop, and they hand her another laptop while they fix it or because of the downtime, so she can go right back I would think that we could possibly use UMass as a resource and at least get some of the kind of questions we might have.
I think we're open to looking at any model of best practice.
Someone from there might be able to say to us, well, you're not being realistic that this one person can't do all of these things.
I think that's the other piece. At some point...
And the cost for that one person is going to be fear not fear, so.
I think even if you had, if the budget wasn't the concern, if the job description wasn't, I don't know that you can find, even with one person working as many hours as they could, I don't think you could get it all done in this day and age with things evolving the way they are. I think that's just true. So I think what we're going to have to do is find the things, and hopefully articulated it, that the board says are the priorities. What are the must-haves that you want accomplished on the high-level security issues? And then what are the things that you want in the day-to-day supports to departments? And I think we're going to have to create that priority list to sort of backfill into the position description and make sure they align so that the functions that you're telling IT department to focus on are the ones that get you to those goals. And things that are outside of that, we need to figure out how to handle those too. And so if that's not what is going to be handled by this position, does that get outsourced to a vendor? Does that, you know, get handled in some other way? Or as a department or as the board, are you saying this department is not responsible for that? So departments who need something extra have to consider a different way to get that done. You know, I think everybody wants to do as much in-house as we possibly can, but if we truly can't meet a specific need and you say the focus has to be on something else, then we have to find a way to address that other need in a different way.
So without trying to slow this process down, is this something that forming a committee to do? Would that solve the problem, or?
I don't know.
Can I ask what problem you're trying to solve with that question?
Well, I mean, you want an IT person from, you need to create an IT person from top to bottom. Do we have the ability to do that? I mean, without, within a reasonable amount of time?
I think, we're having this conversation too. I think the challenge is going to be, we always try to look at what a neighboring community is doing and then figure out what's the Irving approach to that, right? And I think, as we've discussed in the past, that typically our approach looks a little bit different than maybe the solution or the approach that our neighbor has taken. So I don't, I don't want to pretend like I can quickly look to our peers and find four different models for you to look at and say, here's how three other towns about, you know, 2,000 people handle this issue. We're not going to find that in a way that's going to give you a lot to work with. I think we can find some model job descriptions. I know that we can access best practices and guidance from the state, whether it's Mass Cyber, whether it's UMass, all of that, I'm confident we can do. I think it's still going to come down to us defining what is it that Irving says we need to accomplish, and that, I think, could be informed by feedback from stakeholder groups, whether that's department heads, I think it absolutely should include department heads, whether that is some other public feedback or something of that nature. I guess what I was thinking is that this may be a multi-pronged approach. This may be, you know, let's start with identifying the must-haves in town, and I'm sure that there's more detailed information that Jake can help compile about what has been worked on. I gave you a high-level summary, security-type data, we wouldn't present in the forum like this, but I'm sure we can get you more information about what's been worked on and what's outstanding, so you have a better idea of the scope. And I'm sure we can work together to identify what are some outstanding requests that are sort of on the docket and they're next in line to be addressed, to give you at least where we are today. And as you're considering where we are today, we can also start working on outreach to try to figure out where departments are hoping that you're willing to support them going and try to meet in the middle. So I think it's collecting all of that. I'm not sure, to answer your question about a committee, I'm not sure if a committee would help us do that. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay. So Chairman Smith, you've been doing this for a number of years...
IT guy, Jake, yeah.
As an IT person for us. And so I don't know what you know. I don't know where you believe we should be going from a technical point of view and from an IT point of view, how we protect our system and all of those issues that should be a first priority in finding an IT person. And I guess, to your point, some of the lesser things may not be as important as cybersecurity and maintaining our systems. And then thirdly, probably, how do we develop for the future? Or where do we take our system to, whatever? All this is Greek to me, so I just don't know.
Right. Well, I think, to whatever level it helps, and you both would like, I can help try to distill some of that down in plain English, like where things are, what they are, and what, you know, I would recommend from an IT standpoint as, you know, priorities or gaps that we have. Be thoughtful about how we present that. And then also, you know, combining that with best practices, other models that are out there to complement that information, and then take, you know, what would departments like, what do they feel are gaps for what they need or want today versus what they're receiving for IT support and services? And I can help put all that together. I think the challenge is, one of the challenges is just the time that we're spending and that the demands are asking for, not even getting to good or preferred, is very undefined by the job that existed. And if we're going to spend some amount of effort and time in developing and answering those questions and providing the data, that's going to take additional time and just want to be thoughtful about budget and the position that exists today, because I think your question isn't necessarily just about a position or a person, but more of what is an IT department for Irving? What has it done today with whoever and however? And then what could it be, what should it be? And then the board coming up with, making decisions around that, both fiscal and staff and all those pieces that go with it. But doing that takes time, and we're consistently working at a level, and an amount of hours and budget that is much higher than was contemplated in 2013. And so I think that's at least a starting point to even do some of this work. Where does the board feel like we should be to start? So that we can ensure we either can do that or we don't have the budget or time to even answer some of those questions, whatever that might be, is to do those things. And then to allow you to have the information, you know, in the simplest way possible to make those decisions, because we can draw out the kind of, where are we today? What's our landscape? What are some of the things that are outstanding in the various categories that are going to make sense? You know, we can simplify, keep it simple, you know, are these security-related things? Are these infrastructure? Are these, you know, help desk services to the day-to-day operation, to the public-facing? What, you know, what buckets do they fall into? And where do we have a bunch of open items? Where do we have what, you know, is probably at least pretty good for who we are and the size and what we're trying to do? I think the other experience, and Bill, you may remember this, I think in the last handful of years, we had looked at potentially getting into something with other municipalities near us and partnering on something that would be more of a scale of a department that could try to manage those across a group of towns for the fiscal distribution piece. And I think what we found at the early onset of that was that we were in a different place than a lot of our smaller peers that are similar in size to us. And so where we were was ahead of them in a lot of areas, or we had already advanced and developed beyond where they were starting at. And we found that, you know, that collaboration was just going to be kind of disconnected and not have the advantages for everyone that we were looking for, so we didn't pursue it. But it doesn't mean that we don't need to flesh out better what is IT to Irving? And how do we want to set the service level? And then how do we fund and staff it? Regardless of who that is. I mean, it's not, what does it even look like? Because we haven't really had those conversations in many years.
And I just, if I can, just to add to that, one other time that this keeps coming up and people acknowledge it, and then we haven't addressed this part of the conversation, are the capital projects. So when there's a new outlay, I think people assume that maybe the replacement of the computers is something that IT will handle, and that's a, you know, that's an additional labor cost that has to be considered. But if you're doing a large-scale project, you know, we're looking to overhaul a security system for an entire facility or department, the project management aspect of that is time-consuming. And so I think that's a question that has come up in the past. Is that a cost that the select board is assuming is built into the IT department? Therefore, every year, is their staff time budgeted in anticipation of large-scale projects? Or is that something above and beyond in addition to? And it really hasn't been addressed. If we know that answer upfront, it helps with the regular operating budget, but it also informs the capital request process as to how we approach that work. And I think that also dovetails into, and capital has, as a committee, done a lot to refine the request process and ask departments to reflect on what their anticipated impacts are for their operating budget. So you ask for a new initiative, what does that mean for the operating budget in years two, three, and four after the project's launched? And so if you ask for a new service that's going to improve systems and improve security and have all these benefits, what's the ongoing support? Is that just a, now I'm making this up, is this just a town hall function or is this an IT function as well? Is this just a library function or is this also an IT function? And what is that staff allocation? Because if that just now becomes an ongoing expectation for the department, does that mean it's in addition to, or does that mean it replaces something that was being done before? Yeah, I just think that we've been, over the last five to six years, we've been adding and growing as remote work requests have increased, as flexible work environments are expected. We've got a more robust system in place. It also requires more to maintain it.
What, Brian, what is our current budget for IT?
I knew you were going to ask that, and I should have had that logged in and ready to go for you.
I think there's somebody in the audience that might be willing to assist you.
It's right over there, but I was just going to ask a clarifying question.
I'll look at that one.
Are you referring to the overall IT budget, expenses and everything? Or are you talking salary and wages portion, or ordinary expenses, or capital? Just those kind of buckets of the budget that we have today?
Well, I'm kind of talking about all of it.
Okay.
Okay. Or wages, because it's not a salary position.
Salary and wages bucket.
Okay.
Let me just quickly pull that up. I just had that. Okay. So Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the overall salary and wage line was 44,000 for, if I like, 26? That's correct. The total department budget, this is with your capital article in there, of 35,000, because you were purchasing new computers this year, but the total operating and capital budget for this year was 217,288. So to Jake's point, 44,000 was identified for wages, and then we had ordinary expenses, which is all the townwide software and support, 138,288.
And then 35 in capital.
For that special article. And I think to your point, that's not what was contemplated back in 2013, I'm sure.
I don't even know if it was five figures.
So some of your computers are coming to the end of the useful life? I think we're looking at computers that were largely seven years or older, or?
Five, you know, average around five years. So as we've been doing it for a few years, we've been trying to allocate some money in the capital request to do, to rotate four- to five-year-old equipment at least.
So throughout town, all the computers that are out there, identify the oldest ones that are in need of replacement, order that, and then decommission the ones that were deployed.
In an ideal world, about every five years, and so every year, you just...
About two years into, maybe three years into starting to have a more of a structured pattern around that. One of the challenges was we did a lot of, um, laptop outlay during COVID, beginning of COVID. So a lot of things are coming at five years, give or take, and so we have this bulk that we're trying to spread out and bridge a little bit to get on a better cycle.
That, to that point, during COVID, um, we had just, I wanna say it was 2019, I think you just replaced several desktops throughout the town. Um, and so with 2020, we had to make a transition to laptops. So we used grant funding and some other sources to identify that. So to Jake's point, you had a bit of a replacement schedule before. We had this emergent need, we made a big transition, and so now we have this group of computers that are all on a similar schedule that he now needs to tease apart into a manageable schedule.
Following some of what Brian was saying, I think some of the recent things that you'll remember that, talking about the, the support that are required, you know, like ClearGov, we talked about how to fund it last year
Mm-hmm.
to get started on it for, uh, capital budgeting in our budget book. Uh, but, and how to fund the licensing, but there's also support, both initially and ongoing. Internally, yes, we, we have support from vendors, but you've all probably experienced, that's, goes to a point. And so there's a point where, you know, ours kicks in. Uh, you know, capital security projects that we've done recently to do some upgrades. We found some funding within those budgets that wasn't necessarily well-planned ahead of time to, um, identify towards some of the staff time required to support the, um, rollout, program management, uh, installation process, et cetera. But then there's an ongoing year, year-by-year support level that's needed too internally with the users of the system. If they're having issues, you know, beyond what the vendors are gonna provide. So those are just two examples of where we've done projects, maybe not, um, as detailed as we've talked about now, ensuring that we had incorporated the, the costs to the staff and such to support the project from, um, purchase through implementation. And then also just the ongoing support as we've grown our systems. And there's, there are some efficiencies that we leverage in doing these different, different projects, some of them. But often they also come with some additional overhead that we don't necessarily. We haven't taken any structured approach since, you know, 2013 to talk about, how is that part of the budget, right? And, and so we've been able to allocate some costs there as that, in the year the project's done, but we haven't necessarily talked about that in the budget sense, I don't think, so. Back to the IT coordinators, just to give you a little bit, they do have, um, a little bit of background on that. I don't, I don't believe it does have a formal job description either, although I could be wrong. Um, there is some reference to it in the, uh, FY, I think it's the FY twenty-nineteen budget, um, narrative. It talks about when it was established in 2016, the stipended position, and what its role was at that time. It's in the, it's in the narrative that year. And then it talks about what, um, what was changing potentially in FY nineteen and beyond, was at that time, we were talking about moving to a different model and a different support structure, which never happened, but, but that we had been talking about at that time and going to an outsourced or a third-party potentially. And just the amount, the kind of oversight that that position would need to provide versus what it was doing. May give you some color to at least what it had been doing or was envisioned to do i- in that position.
So that was the plan and then COVID?
Yeah, then COVID and, um, at the time, I think I had, I think it even says I had expressed that I would be discontinuing doing it in the next year or so, and that's why, the kind of catalyst to that. And I was able to continue doing it too, so here we are and it's even way more than it was then, so.
All right, so.
I can send that narrative to the two of you as well, so you have that for context.
All right, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 I, I was just acknowledging what Brian's just, just said.
So next steps, um, in terms of this identification of our current landscape and all of that, do we have the budget and the bandwidth to spend some time to establish that in a presentation form that we could say, you know, this is where we're at? And then couple that with feedback from stakeholders, department heads, um, our community, um, our residents, um, of what they'd like to see, um, as sort of the skeleton of this body that we're gonna try to build, um, is that?
I think for a long-term goal, yes, we absolutely could do that this spring, um, or, or in the coming months. I don't know that we'll have that completed in time for our budget presentations. So I think that's why I was, I was recommending that we need to consider maybe a short-term, at least a working plan from the select board for getting through the immediate future. And then we can certainly spend the spring, you know, this winter into spring, doing that due diligence that you're talking about to better inform and allow you to make a more comprehensive plan about what are we doing longer term? Um, and do that, that more robust engagement. Um, I know that we can get some high-level information for you about what the department's been working on and get that answered. And I know that we have current department heads that interact with the IT department on a regular basis that we can get some initial feedback from. Um, and that is probably stuff that you could all have in the very short term.
So it, it sounds like we're, what we need to consider is, is updating the job description and putting it out.
I think we need to consider at least having it up to date. Make sure it reflects at least what we know today to be true. Doesn't mean you can't update it again five months from now if you decide that something new needs to be added or, or changed. And then I think we need to evaluate your, your current staffing plan and make sure it aligns with what you're trying to achieve. And if it does, great. If it doesn't, then I think we need to consider what do those alternatives look like. Um, and I, I know that every time I keep trying to think about this, and probably that's part of the reason why this has been identified year after year since 2019 as something that we need to do and it has yet to be done. I think we get a little overwhelmed with how, how this may get shaped or formed or, or all the stakeholders we wanna engage. And I think part of that paralysis of, of addressing it is because this could go in a lot of different directions. And I think, um, to avoid getting back into that, I think we just started just chipping away at this one topic at a time, um, until you all are feeling pretty solid. And then we move on to the next thing that you have questions about, and I've been building my list of what you're looking for. And, you know, if more ideas come over the next few weeks, just let me know and I'll, I'll research those for you.
So, Bill, I'm gonna offer this. Um, in reading through and my thoughts of current and future states, um, I'll start with an IT support person part-time isn't even a feasible position title for what we're going to need. If it is acceptable to you, I will drill into what is in front of us now as a job description. Very I don't know, ten-thousand-foot view of the landscape of what I know of it in limited tech capacity. I know our current IT support person has some restrictions on what they can do in this position. So, but I will take a stab at it as a very, uh, first-round draft that we can then eviscerate and rebuild. Cause I have no doubt that I will not get anywhere close to a first go-around. But, um, to Brian's point, we're in a situation of paralysis and somebody's gotta do something, so take that as one of our first steps, if that works for you. And if Brian is a department head or Jake is the staff person, is that something that?
I would welcome your involvement on that and, um, you know, we can pull together examples and, and other information that would be necessary to fill that out. I, I agree, looking at the, the current position description, I don't think it accurately reflects
I am close.
What's being expected.
I can also propose some that it's based on what is being done, like just what has been the, the function of whatever title you wanna use, the IT support that you have today. And me, and what I've been actually doing for, for the role, cause it's different to the vault. So I can help with that too, build that out.
And, yes. I also wanna be very aware and sensitive to how any of us would interact in this current model. We don't, certainly don't wanna violate any open meeting law restrictions and.
Agreed. Hence why we're here. Brian, we've been talking since May, I think about this a lot.
Right, we have to be.
This is the forum to have.
True to the guidelines of our respective offices and, and your role, where you're sitting right now um, versus your other role with the town. Um, so just have to make sure we communicate appropriately and how we do that, but.
I'd be happy to work with you.
I will do, uh, I will work with you
Yep.
as much as I can, as, I know we've had talks and we've shared.
Yes.
Might be some people in the gallery that are giving me, what, what bandwidth? Um, but no, it's something that needs to be done.
Yeah.
I sidebar kid too much. Um, so I'm willing to work with Brian.
So the plan is to work on the job description and define it and for the
Get it back to your review.
Of putting it out as soon as possible.
I think we get it back to the two of you with information about what the current work level is. So you have that context, right? I don't want you to have a job description outside of the context of what we're working on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we'll talk about whether or not you think this is closer to what, what needs to be in place. And then we can talk about how that position aligns with current staffing. And, and if it does, great, and if it, it needs to look like something different, then we can have that conversation about what you wanna do next.
I think one question, you know, just, and maybe you won't be there until you've done some of this work, and I get that, is defining what a minimum is today and what a minimum will be in the next couple of years is gonna evolve.
Right.
But where should that minimum be right now? So that we can ensure that we're at least looking at the budget and how does that align?
Right.
Cause if we look at, you know, the past couple of years and what has been done, it's, it's, it needs addressing, right? To ensure that if we're trying to sustain that level of support or more, then, then that you have that, whatever gap that may be in front of you to address now, and then
Yeah.
whatever you're trying to get to in the future beyond that, we can work to get toward. But where are we as a baseline? I think you maybe put that in there as, as kind of the question is like, where is even the starting point?
Right.
Today to ensure that we are able to meet that for this year? And at least plan for next year.
You sort of padded my landing, cause I was going to caution Bill that looking at one job is what we're looking at right now. But as this evolves in the future, you know, it, it's, I would foresee it expanding to either one model where we build out an IT department and manage it internally. Two, we leverage, um, outside vendors and manage service providers that will, a position like this, um, that would be more of an administrator or a manager would manage those relationships and the work they perform. Or even an additional model would be leveraging technology with, you know, I mean, I hear tell, AI is going to streamline a lot of jobs that we currently use human assets for and we won't in the future. I don't know, that's a couple of days down the road. Um, but to Jake's point, I, I see a staff growing in some way in the future, just as once we catch up to keep pace.
Well, I think you just mentioned the other elephant in the room, which is the AI evolution that's occurred just in the last few years. And initially it sounded like this fringe technology that wasn't going to affect our day-to-day. And it, it's here and there's an expectation that it's going to be utilized, but to utilize it means it has to be done safely.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I know we've turned all of our features off to make sure that we're not engaging in something that we're not ready for. But the, the, um, the onslaught of that technology being at our doorstep is, is only going to increase. And if we're not well-versed on how to respond to that and handle that, we're not gonna know what, what potential pitfalls exist. And so I think just that landscape is going to change. So while we've changed, I think technology's in the process of evolving once again, and we're going to have to respond to that. And I don't even wanna pretend to know what that looks like, but we will have many systems to make sure that they're ready for this, to maintain.
So I, I think it's important that, that, um, we, we have a conversation with each of the departments and so we, so that we know what their needs are, where they're at currently.
Okay.
Where they anticipate going.
Okay.
Um, just where they are in that process.
Okay.
And, um, and, and, and I don't want it to be a superficial conversation. I'm just concerned about sensitivity.
Yeah.
And, and whether that, how much of that we can have, either we can have that conversation in a staff meeting
Mm-hmm.
or as opposed to, um, a select board meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, some way to be able to, um, flush out those issues and concerns without giving something away to some.
What if I? Right, no, and that would be, so to your point, again, what I was gonna suggest earlier is in the soliciting information from department heads or identifying pain points is you have regular meetings with all the department heads. This could be set as an agenda item, and if it's appropriate, and maybe I can join that day or Bill can join that day.
Either one of us.
We can hear it. I mean, I, again, just looking at the evolution and the growth, you know, like I said, I'll take a crack at a, at a job description as the very first step. Um, but even thinking ahead of that is, you know, do we have, which we kind of rich body language, we don't have, I don't think, appropriate policies around a lot of it. Um, you know.
We have opportunities.
Right.
In that area.
Lots of opportunities. Do we have, you know, do we even have SLAs where if someone was to say, well, I asked so-and-so to get this done and it hasn't been done and, you know. You know, if somebody's upset because something didn't get done in two days and the SLA is five, well, they're not really service-level agreement, you know, what, what is your, what is your commitment to your end-users? And, um, you know, can the department head de facto in his position go, well, this is what it says and I understand it's urgent, but it's identified, we're working on it, and we still have seventy-two hours to meet our commitment under that. I mean, that's a, this thing's gonna snowball, you know, but it needs to.
Um, yeah, we don't have any of that in place.
Right, so.
So can we start engaging?
Yes.
That process?
Happy to.
While we're looking at refining the job description?
Of course, and if you want me to align as I'm meeting with departments, I can, um, invite one of you. And if you want me to align as I'm meeting with departments, I can invite one of you and obviously try to align you with your liaisons to your departments. But obviously for the departments that Jake would normally leave, I would reach out to one of you to, to fill in and we could ask those questions.
Okay. So that's, what we have is some first steps. What else were you looking for us as the board to, that we can put a target on tonight?
I think the last thing that I need some clarity on and whether or not you can do it tonight, I understand that you may not be able to. But I think the one thing that I'm, hindsight, so it was 2020 and I know that sometimes you all do me the favor of reading a ridiculous motion every time you appoint somebody to something or authorize something. And I do that for a reason because details matter. And I think the one thing I'm really struggling with in terms of the, the appointment that was made and the decisions that are made, that the records are very light and I don't have a lot to work with. So I do need some guidance from you all, you know, not only for thinking about budget planning and what we should be forecasting, but what are we at least trying to maintain for the balance of 2026? So what's our staffing level? And so we've been trying to respond to as many help tickets and demands and working through security issues or whatever needed to be done. And so there, there were weeks where it would be, you know, closer to 30 hours a week to, to try to get the work done. And, and there was others it was less. But on average, it's been around 20 hours a week. And so I don't know what your predecessors anticipated and they didn't tell me. So I need to look to the two of you to help me identify, is there a baseline service or is there not to exceed? Until you've got this figured out, is it not to exceed a certain number of hours? I'm looking for some guardrails and some, some guidance on that because it's not, it's not clear. And unfortunately, I think that's a disservice to us in this moment. I mean, I don't, to Jim's point right now, I don't want to slow down response times and I don't want to have departments wait unnecessarily. You know, when they feel behind on something, it creates pressure points for them that ratchets up their, their sense of urgency for some of these items. And so when Jake's able to go and, and provide that support and alleviate those concerns, I think that's in everybody's best interest. At the same time, if I need to push back and say, for this week or these next two weeks, that time's already spoken for, this project will have to wait or this need is going to have to wait, or this one is the pressing one, and then something that was already tentatively scheduled has to be pushed off to another date, I think having the guardrail helps. And that's something that I think we've come to realize has been missing.
Yeah, I think primarily from the break-fix or priority project standpoint is where most of the IT focus has been or how it's been prioritized. Some of the other things that the board would probably feel like holistically we should be focused on, we're not for sheer, you know, time and, and budget to support them. But I think the average for the last couple of years, demand has been above 20 hours a week on, on average. And that's just break-fix and project support and probably lots where people went, is my SLA weeks or months or, because I hoped for days. I think if we're being honest, that's probably some of what you'll hear. But, but that's kind of where we're like, where's, where's the baseline? I was looking back forward, I can tell you, I think the 2019 budget was, I don't even know if the whole department was over 40, let alone the time. So I mean, it's, nothing of where we are today was contemplated in 2013. It just wasn't where, wasn't where anything was. I think you might've been there.
Some of that conversation when it, when it happened and it was pretty vague.
Yeah.
And the demands were a whole different world than they are today.
By year.
Right.
Yeah.
As things come up, well, as things come up, it's not a few hours here and there every week anymore, right? It's not where we're operating anymore. So how do we at least evaluate where we need to be at a baseline for this year, keep evolving it, but can tell you where that is and where we are against that, right?
Yeah. All right, well, I want a guideline.
Yep.
And I'll start by saying this is a motion that I am readily willing to remake at our next time we have this on the agenda, but just to, so we understand where you are and we can look more completely at what it's going to look like for the rest of the year. I was just going to say, I, yeah, I, I know this is going to change, but looking strictly at the position and where we're at, I will say I'm going to make a motion that the IT support position is not to exceed 19 hours per week.
Okay.
Until further analysis of the needs can be completed. Okay. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I will get, going on getting you all that information.
Okay.
As I said, I am confident that it's going to change, but we need to have our decisions be driven by data.
Okay.
We'll get going on that.
Thank you all.
We're about to experience a scream test. A scream test?
Screaming, is this thing?
My thing's not working.
It may feel that way. I thought you said scream the first time.
No, scream.
Yeah, I got that. I got that after the second time, but then I followed.
It may sound like that.
Done on IT?
I think we're done.
You've done on IT for tonight?
Yeah, so I don't know that we ever officially appointed.
Oh, yeah.
A temporary chair.
You didn't, but.
In your.
I'll rejoin if we're done with IT, so.
I would invite Chairman Smith to rejoin our meeting at 9:46.
I think I only have three more topics for you.
Next topic is Assistant Town Accountant Screening Committee.
So I, I'd be happy to volunteer my name for.
I would be happy to have Bill volunteer his name.
I won't fight you for it. I'm available. I will as liaison, I mean, I think I'm a real liaison. But I don't mind either way. So if you want to take it, that's totally fine. It's up to you.
Debbie's eager to get going.
Okay.
When was the application closure?
Last week.
Last week, right? So ready to get underway.
Three candidates and we're ready to review.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to establish the Assistant Town Accountant position preliminary screening committee to consist of three members and to appoint Selectman Bembry, Debra Marrow, and Brian Smith as members.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Informationally, as authorized by the select board, I have approved the following payroll warrants. The 11th payroll warrant for FY '26 in the aggregate amount of $233,073.27 and the 11th payroll benefits warrant in the aggregate amount of $39,017.53, both dated December 4th, 2025.
Thank you for that. We'll make a motion to approve the 13th accounts payable warrant for fiscal year 2026 in the aggregate amount of $167,952.06 as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I believe that covered regular business?
That's correct.
With that, I will move, we go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. And immediately following, go into executive section pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares, which I do declare. New England Benevolent Police Association, Local 121 Police Unit, we will not return to regular session. Is there a second?
Second.
Hold those in favor, roll call.
Selectman Long?
Aye.
Chairman Smith?
Aye.
Selectman Bembry?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.